Okay, I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for October the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you all for joining us. And we'll, um, we'll just get, uh, make sure everyone is settled down in our, in our gallery. Okay, thank you very much. Once again, we are at our study session for the City of Wheat Ridge, uh, Color- Colorado for August fifteenth. We have, um, we have two, uh, business items on our study session again tonight. The first item is a discussion on affordable housing. And our second item is the two thousand and twenty-three budget request from the Carnation Festival, the Wheat Ridge Business District and Local Works. Um, we will start our, our meeting as we do, uh, many of our meetings with comments from the public on any item that is on the agenda. Uh, I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you are here in City Hall and would like to speak, you may come to the podium and we'll recognize you now. And, uh, if you are online and would like to speak, you may raise your hand in the virtual format and we'll bring you into the meeting. So I'm going to, I don't have anyone in the hall that, uh, is, uh, wishing to speak, and I'll go to, uh, Mary Ann or, uh, let's see, who is, who is looking at our online? Do I have anybody with their hand raised? Our clerk is, uh, is joining us by, uh, by remote control tonight. Do we have anybody, uh, Mr. Clerk that has raised their hand?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Then we will, uh, move past our public's, uh, comment on items and we will go to our first item, which is a, uh, discussion on affordable housing. And, uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll introduce this real quickly, um, for the public's sake. If you may, if you just joined us, um, City Council's been meeting in a workshop, um, for the last couple of hours. Talking about a very, um, important topic, not only in Wheat Ridge, but across the country right now. And, um, specifically in Wheat Ridge, the housing market, um, has really dramatically changed. We've all seen it in the last five to ten years. Um, we're fortunate to, um, receive a grant, uh, this year to do a, a housing study, affordable, affordable housing study. This is, I believe, probably the first, um, effort ever in, um, for the City of Wheat Ridge. And, um, we're hoping that this information that we, um, we get out of, uh, from the final report will help us inform, um, the city's, uh, comprehensive plan. We're proposing, um, that in the two thousand and twenty-three budget to update the city's comprehensive plan. So I think this, this, uh, research is very important. This discussion's very important. That will help us, um, inform how we move forward, um, uh, with the city's comprehensive plan and what, what the city should look like in the next couple of decades. So, um, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to our consultant group, C Z B, who is here this evening. Um, we hired them to, uh, do the strategy, uh, affordable housing study and strategy for us. And I believe Eric Amy is going to start off.
Thanks, Patrick. Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for having us back again. Looking forward to continuing our conversation on affordable housing, uh, and strategy. We are, what we're gonna do tonight is, uh, walk through some of the market data. We didn't talk that much about it this afternoon, but some of it, maybe a little bit of you have seen. Uh, if you visited with us at the open house at the rec center in July, you've seen some of this as well. It is in the memo. It was in your packet. Some members of the, of the public might not be as familiar with some of this. So we'll just kind of run through that. Not a, not everything we've looked at, not every piece of data that isn't, you could imagine, uh, but some high-level key indicators that help tell the story of what's been going on in affordability in Wheat Ridge. Uh, we'll talk a bit about target markets and sort of who should be the focus of affordable housing policy and strategy in Wheat Ridge as we go forward. And then close out by talking about some, what we're calling potential intervention concepts, uh, which we started to get into just a little bit earlier this afternoon. But talk a little bit about, you know, where, where could this strategy head? What kind of tools are potentially in the toolbox? I guess, uh, Mayor, it's, uh, Council's discretion, uh, whether you wanna jump in with questions. You know, we can talk about things as they come, or if you wanna wait till the end.
What's, uh, well, what's your, what's your preference? Would you rather take questions on a, on an ongoing basis or hold and have a little round for questioning?
I think we could take questions as they, as they emerge. So if you, I would say to everyone in Council, if you see things here that you wanna talk about as they pop up, just let us know. Good, thank you. Okay. Uh, the, the general overview here, before we get into anything specific, is, uh, yes, it has gotten, uh, it is expensive in Wheat Ridge, uh, to buy a house or in some cases to rent, not in all cases. But generally, the market has strengthened over time. So a lot of the anecdotes that you hear, uh, a lot of the stories that you see in the Denver Post and other media are corroborated by this data. And, uh, it does have affordability implications that are important. We're gonna start here with just a couple of slides on, uh, home ownership, information related to homeownership and purchasing a home. And it's important to point out that home values were on the rise even before COVID. So this is not just something that happened in the last couple of years. This is a, a longer-term trajectory that goes back to the last decade. Uh, the chart that you see here is the difference between the median owner income in Wheat Ridge from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty. That's that kind of lighter green line. Median owner income in Wheat Ridge today is about ninety thousand dollars a year. It has grown, but it has not grown as quickly as home values. Uh, the figure that's above that is, uh, based on the two thousand and twenty reported median owner occupied unit value, what the income would need to be to buy that. So what you can see is about two thousand and fifteen, this sort of gap started to open up where values were rising to the point where it really, at the median, started to go beyond the capacity of the median owner income, uh, in Wheat Ridge to purchase that median owner occupied unit. Shorter way to say that is, home values are outstripping incomes. Not just a Wheat Ridge story, the pattern of, uh, increase in the sale prices. So this data is from, um, Census Bureau, American Community Survey Five-Year Estimates Program. It's self-reported. So it's got some benefits, but it's got some drawbacks. One of the drawbacks is it is self-reported. When we get to actual sales data, this is not self-reported. This is actual black and white. This is what stuff sold for. Uh, this is to create a good apples-to-apples comparison across jurisdictions. We stripped out townhouses. We stripped out condos. This is just single-unit detached houses. Um, and you can see there, uh, that Wheat Ridge, Arvada and Lakewood look pretty similar. Golden is a bit of an outlier, uh, with a bit of a more expensive market. But as of two thousand and twenty-one, the median sale price for a single-unit detached house was approaching six hundred thousand dollars. Relative affordability can be found in townhouses and condos. And we say relative because, just because it's less than a single-unit detached house does not necessarily mean that it's affordable, uh, to a large swath of households. You can see here the differences between those housing types, those four-sale ownership housing types, and how they've, they've changed in that five-year period. Might be worth noting, I think we noted this in the memo, that, that particular spike in the townhouse median sale price, uh, is likely due to a lot of new products coming online, uh, over those, over those years, and the stuff that's newer tends to be more expensive. Switch now to the rental market. Lower-income renters have historically found relative affordability in Wheat Ridge. So Wheat Ridge, uh, has done a good job in the past, providing more affordable renting, rental stocks. The chart on the left is the median gross rent. Gross rent is not just, uh, the rent you pay to the landlord, but it's also inclusive of utilities and other costs. So it's kind of all-inclusive number. Uh, it's been for quite a while lower than what's found across the metro at the median. Uh, median incomes are also lower for renters. So Wheat Ridge has, and there's obviously correlation there, I think, um, that Wheat Ridge has been home to renters that have incomes that are lower in general than those across the metro region as well. This is a chart, if you recall. We looked at this all the way back in May. So it's an oldie but a goodie, just showing that by the various income categories, uh, the number, total number of renter households are the gray columns, and then the hatched part are the, the number that are, and corresponding percentage that are cost burdened, meaning they're, meaning that they pay more than thirty percent of their income toward housing. This was as of two thousand and twenty. So what we see is, uh, the greatest rate of unaffordability, or those households that are paying more than thirty percent of their gross income, is at those lower income levels. If we look at more current data, uh, from this year and last year, this is as of, up through April, I guess, through the spring, um, a general upward trajectory in median rents for two-bedroom, one-bedroom units. This will, uh, you know, sort of mimic what's going on across the region. Uh, undoubtedly, I think there are two things going on here. One is, you're seeing the effects of new rental units come online in Wheat Ridge, and those new units are more expensive. So it helps to raise that median. And then you're also seeing just sort of the general, the market rise as well. Those, we don't have the, the Denver Metro numbers here for comparison, uh, but these are, these are Wheat Ridge-specific. If we had them on here for comparison, you'd see that Denver Metro is still higher. We're gonna move now to a little bit of discussion about target markets. And this is something that we went through in detail this afternoon, uh, but for anybody who might be watching at home or watching this at a different time, essentially, our analysis allows us to, uh, chunk the, um, households in Wheat Ridge sort of into these income bands. And it's our assessment that based on market conditions, based on prices, sale prices and rents, that any households that are at a hundred fifty thousand dollars or higher, more or less, uh, can afford Wheat Ridge. They can rent very, very comfortably. They could be homeowners if they'd like to be. It doesn't necessarily mean they can have any house they want, but they could, they could find a house to buy in Wheat Ridge. Just below that, uh, the one hundred to one fifty range, uh, homeownership becomes a bit more difficult, not impossible, but more difficult, while renting remains comfortable. Just below that, seventy, about seventy-five to a hundred, uh, ownership becomes increasingly unlikely. Again, not, let's say outright impossible, uh, but does become more unlikely. However, renting is still, uh, pretty easy to do here in Wheat Ridge, given what rents are, even amongst some of the newer, more expensive units. Just below that, it starts to become a, a bit more varied. Uh, ownership is not, uh, not possible, really, at, at those incomes between fifty and seventy-five. But if we go back here for a second, we see that, uh, the number of rent-burdened households starts to drop as we get there. And so households in that income range of fifty to seventy-five can generally rent comfortably, but not totally. So as a general statement, um, things are okay on the rental side, but not for all. That's why we say it varies. And then below fifty thousand dollars in annual household income, ownership certainly is out of question, given existing prices. And, uh, it's our assessment that while in the recent past, it may have been, it was easier to find rental units that could be afforded, uh, for that group. And whilst that may still be true a little bit today, uh, it's, you know, they're under threat. So as rents go up, uh, that group is particularly vulnerable. We'll, this might be a bit dense. I think we'll skip over this one for now. Um, as we look at these income bands and we look at the kinds of households that fall into them, and, and we know this because we're able to, um, in existing data, sort of correlate these income ranges with a variety of types of households. And it doesn't mean, for instance, that, um, if there's a senior house, a lot of senior households that are in that income band of zero to fifty thousand, for instance, that there also won't be senior households that are much higher income. This is just sort of a, again, a, a general set of statements about which kinds of households in Wheat Ridge tend to fall into what kinds of, of income ranges. And, uh, for the purposes of thinking through in the future, which kinds of households, uh, with what kind of composition might be sort of the targets of, of Wheat Ridge Affordable Housing Policy. And we have identified a handful of tools here. There are, these are not all the tools that exist. Um, these are sort of general categories, but, um, they're a good way of thinking about big buckets, I guess you might say, of what might apply for these, uh, income ranges and for these types of tenure, tenure being rent or own. And so again, if you go back to what we just talked about over here, uh, which households are likely to be renters versus owners in Wheat Ridge today and going forward in the near future? That matches with what you see here in the, in the third column. So households, uh, up to a hundred thousand dollars, again, ownership's gonna be very difficult. And so the focus, as far as we're concerned at this time, until we discuss it and, and any decisions are made to the contrary, the focus will really be on renting for those households. And depending on which income categories we're talking about, an inclusionary requirement, where some percentage of new units are required to be affordable at, uh, rent ranges for, to be determined, that is a tool that could come into play, uh, that the use of density and height as a tool, whether that means, um, building to densities and heights that are greater than is the norm in the community, but that happens in areas where that's allowed. So for instance, uh, what we're getting at here is in Wheat Ridge, it's not possible to go to, say, four stories all across the city. It's impossible to do that in a few places. It's not possible to go to thirty-five or forty units per acre all across the city, but it's possible to do that in a few places. And those kinds of densities are required to get the kinds of economies of scale that then enable, uh, uh, the kinds of rents that are more affordable and also then puts things in striking distance of public subsidy and other tools that can be more helpful in, uh, increasing affordability. So that's what we mean when we say density and height. Financial support is another tool that will become important, potentially. Really, what it comes down to, affordable housing is about closing the gap between what housing costs and what a household can pay. And one of the ways you do that is simply by, you know, plugging that hole with, with cash. There are many examples around the country, probably in this community as well, where, uh, local governments have made direct investments to get, you know, pro- either, if their ultimate goal is simply to have a project happen and they require, you know, um, some gap financing, that's one example. Another example is when a project may happen anyway, but a city or the local government wants something that it wouldn't otherwise get, then it can purchase that thing that it wants that it wouldn't otherwise get. Those are both examples of how financial support might work in any of these cases. And then programmatic support, whether it is, uh, for example, in that fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar row up there where we have talked about the possibility, and we'll talk more in a minute, about a rental rehab program, for example, where, uh, the city might invest some funds in an aging rental property that is in need of upgrades and do so in exchange for affordable rents. Uh, someone has to make all that happen. It's not so easy as writing a check. Uh, there's a, there's a lot that goes into that. There are negotiations. There's spec writing, uh, determining the scope of work, determining how long the affordability period is going to be all. Someone's gotta figure all that out. Someone's gotta help administer the funds. And so there becomes sort of an administrative burden, and that's what we mean by programmatic support. The same thing might be true if, uh, the city were to look at, for instance, an affordable homeownership program. So, um, as we talk more about that potentially, you'll see that that's not so easy as simply, um, you know, if my colleague Thomas wanted to be a first-time homebuyer here in Wheat Ridge, and the city said, "We love that, and we see that his income isn't quite high enough to make it work, maybe we'll just give him some down payment assistance." It could be that easy, but it may also be the case that the city wants to preserve the affordability of that over time. May want to have a deed restriction in place, may want to, um, over time, be in contact with Thomas to make sure that, uh, he has the support he needs as a first-time homeowner. He may have questions about what he's allowed to do in his home that he purchased with city help and that has a deed restriction on it, so on and so forth. So that also requires some administrative support that may not currently exist. So that would fall into that category as well. So this is, um, a, a good guide for us, I think, as we go forward, and we can, we'll come back to this as we think about what kind of households are, are priorities here in Wheat Ridge, what kind of tools can be, have the most impact, and which ones seem like they're worthy of, uh, further discussion. So now we'll just talk a little bit in more detail about what some of these tools are, kind of how they work. Again, this is high-level, summary level. What we're looking for tonight is really feedback on, um, any of these and saying, "Oh, that sounds really interesting. We'd like to know more about that. That seems like it could really help a, a set of households that we think is important." Or you might say, you know, "Oh, well, we see what you're talking about, and that doesn't sound like it's for us, and let's not talk about that anymore." Any and all of that feedback would be great for us and would, is totally fair game for this conversation. So the first one here is, again, because these, we kind of have these dots that nicely correspond in many ways, we're able to tie, uh, some of these tools to these different income bands. But this is the first general sort of category of intervention concepts that we've identified, which is understanding that the amount of subsidy that's needed to assist households with incomes below fifty thousand dollars is quite substantial. Understanding that it could be one hundred, one hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars per unit, that that adds up really fast. Uh, the lower, generally speaking, the lower the income, uh, the bigger the subsidy that's needed to sort of solve that housing problem, which we talked about, uh, earlier this afternoon. And so there is a system in place, uh, that works on this. It's a system of providers, uh, it's the system of housing authorities and tax credits and, uh, housing vouchers. And you have providers like that in your community now. Nobody's saying that that system is perfect. Nobody's saying that that system is, uh, as well-funded as we all would like for it to be. I think, um, you guys can check me on this, my colleagues can check me on this, but I believe something like four out of every five households that would be eligible for these kinds of housing supports, just based on their income, never get it because there isn't enough to go around nationally. And so what the city might do is understanding that, again, because the city doesn't build housing on its own, uh, that there are providers who do this, and these providers may, uh, bring projects, and put projects on the board in Wheat Ridge from time to time, that there are things that the city could do if it was so inclined to move these projects along to support them. And that could include things like waiver of development fees, uh, reduction in parking minimums, expedited review processes, and financial support. Again, not exhaustive, but this is a pretty good start on a list of, of what a, what a city could do to support providers who are willing to bring these projects to fruition. We talked about this a bit earlier, uh, this particular concept that we are bullish on, which is the preservation of existing affordability, understanding that Wheat Ridge has this large volume of naturally occurring affordable housing, of these aging rental properties that are, are in need of upgrades and, uh, sort of new lease-on-life. They tend to have rents that are affordable to households between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars in annual household income. And the reason that these properties are worthy of attention is, uh, number one, they are currently affordable. That's good. Number two, they are at a point, many of them are at a point in their life where they do need that investment. And because if left to their own devices, uh, those properties are positioned to potentially reset rents faster than incomes will grow. Inclusionary housing is another option that might be under consideration. This is only going to apply to newly built housing. Uh, it's a legal mechanism that requires a share of new housing construction to be affordable to people with low and moderate incomes. It's got the advantage of, uh, letting the private sector do some of the community's work for it by providing the housing. Uh, the community gets a fair share of the growth benefits. So, you know, when, on the assumption that somebody who's building something is going, not just the person who's building it, but the future residents are all getting some benefit from this thing happening, uh, that there could be an extraction of benefits for the community at large as well. It's got some challenges. Inclusionary housing has some challenges. Um, it is based on the growth of housing supply. So if you don't have a lot of growth, you're not gonna get a lot of units because if you have a percentage of inclusionary set at fifteen or, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty percent, and you only build a hundred units, that's ten, fifteen or twenty units. Again, not nothing, but it's, it's not a whole lot. Yes, Janice?
Thanks, Eric. You know, I, one of the places that I see that this would be potentially beneficial in our future would be the, um, Luthran Legacy Campus. And, um, and one of the things that, that we're looking at is we've asked our, um, Urban Renewal Authority to look at creating a new, uh, TIF for that area and to, um, come, come back to us with that, that may potentially be approved. And so can you maybe talk about, like, inclusionary housing in something like a, that, that's a, a from, will be a from-scratch community? And, um, how that, um, could be a benefit in that type of product? And also knowing that there are, um, other subsidies that, you know, that could be there for infrastructure and whatnot?
Yeah, so, um, Luthran, I- Yeah. So, Lutheran, on the assumption that I understand the entirety of Lutheran, it's obviously an incredible opportunity, if and when it redevelops to becoming something very different. It's a large site. There's a lot, it's not currently, I mean, it's not currently entitled to become, I think, what the emerging vision of what it could be. So, there's a lot of conversations to be had about that, and the city has a lot of control over that, given its land use authority and some other mechanisms that are in place. So, URA and TIF being one of them. So, that absolutely could, inclusionary housing could absolutely play a role, but it could also go beyond that. So, inclusionary housing is, if just left to, it just, it only operated on its own, and projects sort of came in, they were more or less by right, but they had this requirement, and they could come up out of the ground, and you get 10 percent, get 10 percent, get 10 percent. And in an opportunity like Lutheran, yes, there could be an inclusionary requirement, but there's also the opportunity to add more to that deal, and to, if and when that's the case, for sort of every increment of public support that goes in, it potentially would allow you to go above and beyond whatever a base inclusionary requirement would be. So, I think there's a lot of interesting things that could come out of that.
Could we do inclusionary requirements as sort of like a layover, you know, kind of how there's like sometimes layover zoning and stuff? Could we do it sort of as a layover, like identify an area where inclusionary housing would be included, and then areas where it wouldn't be included, or is it a policy, it's all for one, one for all?
You can certainly do district-wide, in specific zoning districts. You can designate an overlay district if it were Lutheran and/or other areas. You can certainly, you have the freedom to write that as you want. To your point with regard to Lutheran, you have the opportunity to think about inclusionary zoning, you have the opportunity to think about public-private partnerships. If there were infrastructure, that can be additive to maybe, say, the 10 percent for inclusionary. So, I think when you think about places, whether it's Lutheran or other zoning districts, or the city, for example, I think, think of it as a suite of tools, right? Because I don't think there will be a one-size-fits-all here. I think you'll be targeting different incomes, as we've noted up here, but each of those will require a different program as well.
Great.
Charles, want, you want to get in?
Oh, okay. So, the sheer size of the land you play allows you to do a lot of things. You can, you're at a scale there now, where, as Eric and Thomas had said, you can contemplate your posture as a public sector to drive not just a mix of incomes, right, but a wide-range, a very wide-ranging mix, right? So, you're not necessarily confining yourself to conventional 80, 90, 100, 110 AMI. You could be 50 to 150 AMI. You could really, you have a lot, a lot more room to maneuver when you've got that much volume to work with, number one. Number two is, now you can explore a combination of rental and homeownership. So, you can have a mix of incomes, a mix of 10 years, a mix of uses, right? All of that gives you a much higher gross revenue for the public sector on a square foot basis. So, from a tax base, it's very strong. So, your TIF numbers are likely going to come back and show just how, what a rich vein this is. And then I think finally, when you've got that much space, now you've got the opportunity for the public sector to participate in other ways, parking, infrastructure. And so, you might, without those other ambitions or those other abilities, only be ambitious enough to try to claim 10 percent inclusionary, 15 percent inclusionary. You could imagine Lutheran could generate something on the order of 25 percent, 30 percent, depending on how creatively it's mixed. So, it's a huge opportunity.
The other thing to remember about inclusionary is that we certainly think there is an option to make it workable for rental. There is an option to make it workable for ownership. But there's going to be sort of a minimum kind of number of units to which, for which it's really going to work, a sweet spot in the height-density mix where it's going to be best and get you the most bang for the buck. And so, to some extent, whether you were to somehow find a way to impose inclusionary housing in this place over here, but not over there, something else that's going to control for the way that it works is, what's the underlying zoning? So, if you have a certain kind of zoning with a, that will only allow a certain kind of residential development type, it may not produce, or you may put a requirement on there where, if you ask the private sector, they'll say, "Well, you give me this requirement on land that can only get me this number of units. Those two things don't go together. I'm not going to build anything over here." So, sort of how that's calibrated to, and matched to the locations where it can work, that's definitely something to think through. So, right now, tonight, we're at, you know, 30,000 feet on a lot of these things. But as you get down into any one of them, certainly inclusionary housing, but also an affordable homeownership program or a rental rehab program, there's so much to be figured out down the line. So, but it's a great, it's a great question.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So, theoretically speaking, aside from the Lutheran Legacy Campus, what other potential larger-density projects are in the pipeline? And would a policy of this nature be in place before those developments come before council?
Want to make sure I heard that correctly. What other projects are in line? You're saying height-density or just?
Yes, like larger density in which, like, an inclusionary policy would be in place?
Sure. Yeah, of course Lutheran is the largest 100-acre campus, but we do have some potential, you know, two to 250-unit apartment multifamily projects coming online, potentially, in addition to all the ones that we've already seen, which, you know, we're already negotiating with some developers. We've already told them that they would have to provide some affordability. Didn't give them quite a number yet, but, you know, the Foothills Regional Housing, of course, is working on some projects, but they don't, are not going to be in the inclusionary role. They're limited by their tax credits, anyway. And as I mentioned earlier, they look at AMI of usually somewhere around 60 is kind of the middle ground. They do go up to 80, but it's mainly in the 60 range, down to 30. So, they're already taking care of those income groups. Yeah, it's maybe a little unfortunate in Wheat Ridge. I mean, we've seen a lot of projects that, products that have come on board, and we didn't have any policies in place at the time. So, we've missed some opportunities, but we still have a few projects coming. And even if there isn't a policy in place, I've already, we're already discussing with those that it's, I believe this council's going to require, especially if it requires a rezoning, requires some type of affordability as part of those projects.
So, is, could we take the stance of maybe incentivizing it as opposed to requiring it? I mean, it seems like if we were to work that avenue, that it might be able to be done so quickly.
I think, as Charles said earlier, though, I think there's a certain threshold, right, that you can require it and may not have to put any cash to it or anything else. You know, they were mentioning earlier that 10 percent for Wheat Ridge, 10 to 12 percent at the 80 percent AMI might be a level that is doable for the Wheat Ridge market. If we want to ask for more, probably going to have to incentivize it. You know, the one project that I don't want to talk about too publicly that we're looking at, though, is an urban renewal area, and there's some rural funds available to maybe help with demolition of current buildings on the site. So, there's that type of incentivization that can happen.
So, we had kind of discussed earlier about those natural, naturally occurring affordable housing areas, and we have seen it with like the Howard and Johnson, and then potentially the American Motel. I mean, is this absolutely necessary for us to take a stance right now if we're already seeing the market kind of dictate that affordability as it is? Or is it just not enough? Is that naturally occurring, is it just not enough?
I mean, I think the naturally occurring that our consultants were talking about earlier are some of our lower, I don't know, lower rents apartments that are old, don't have the amenities, and they're dated. That's the naturally affordable, affording, affordable units I think they're talking about. The Howard Johnson, I think that's a project base that they converted that from a motel to workforce housing. I don't, I don't think that's considered part of it.
Which we did give them some money.
And we did incentivize that, yeah. The American Motel, as you mentioned, yeah, we're, that's an urban renewal area. We're actually working with them to see if, how we could help incentivize that redevelopment and encourage some affordability.
Thank you. I've got the Counselor Ohm, and then the Counselor Nosler Beck, and then Counselor Hulteen.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, to your question, which I think is alluding to, like, is there enough potential future development to make an inclusionary policy have an impact? One of the exercises that we did to inform even including it in tonight's discussion was, you know, what kind of land is out there for townhome projects or apartment projects? And I think the consensus from our project team is there was more land than we expected. So, we probably wouldn't have presented it in this way if we didn't think it would have an impact, whether it ended up being only in those exempted, density-exempted areas or not. We can work through those details if there's an interest in inclusionary policy at all. But, yeah, I think there, again, more than we expected in order to make an impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Mayor. The one question I had is, and I guess this is a little bit of a staff question, but instead of having kind of spots specific for these affordable housing areas, why not just do it citywide for all residential, and then just pick a number that makes sense, you know, for like you meet this threshold, you need to include affordable housing, you know? So, obviously, like a four-unit probably wouldn't work, but some type of number, just so that we're not having to revisit time and time again of like, well, does this need to be affordable? What about that?
That, I was going to say, that is a viable approach, to set sort of a minimum threshold. And, you know, there's also, as you think about something like that, also have to think about what are the different, what are the different potential ways that developers could get around this? If you set it at five, do you start to see, just to be silly for a second, it's at five. So, anything that's five or less, you don't have to, or a number of projects that could be 10, you start seeing two side by side that are five and none that are 10. You know, so those kinds of just games and loopholes that creative developers will always find.
So, you're basing on like a per building? I'm thinking more of a per project. They have, you know, there's an acre, two acres, and it's a certain density or something that, or how many units are on that project?
Yeah, sure. You've got a lot of discretion where you set those thresholds.
Yeah, I think what Eric was saying is, you could get, you could have a project that comes in at 30 units, and they realize, "At 10 units, I'm required to build an affordable unit." You might see three phases of a project come in instead of 130. So, you have to just calibrate for it.
Thank you, Counselor Nosler Beck.
I just wanted to go back to the conversation about the incentivizing. Just, I do think that, per your point, Patrick, that we've, we have pushed through some really great projects. And I wonder if there is a way for us to, I love the idea of an overlay with Lutheran, and I was looking at that, and also, you know, some, you know, rental rehab to get things into a place that they need to be. But is there a way to also just be really dynamic here and like incentivize in a way for newer projects that aren't going to need to get their building into a good spot? Is there, what are some of those incentives that could potentially be out there for some of our newer projects to be a part of this work that we're doing?
Well, I think as one example, let's just say there's a motel out there, I won't name it, that developers potentially looking at. There's going to be a lot of cost in demo work, right? Asbestos removal. And if it's in an urban renewal area, I think there's tools we can use to incentivize by helping with those costs. And then, as part of that, you require that we get something. If we're going to give you something, we get something, too, and we put an inclusionary, affordable level on that apartment, or, you know, you could, you can just, you can pay down the cost in many different ways, I think.
And I totally, I get that. What I'm saying is, I'm going to just say, like, the, on 38th, for a building that's already there in existence, is there anything that the city can do with the current?
Kind of retroactively to bring in affordability?
Retroactively, bring into that, that is an incentive where we're, as a city, are stepping up with some assistance on rent, or, I don't know what those incentives are, but, but we have pretty new construction, and, you know, at least from a developer's standpoint, there, I would say that a developer's probably going, "Oof, just made it in, right in time." And it would be great if there was a way for them to start to get into our affordable housing as well.
It's an interesting idea to go essentially to somebody who maybe opened the doors, you know, 18, 24 months before an inclusionary policy and say, you know, "Oops, we missed you, but we'd like some affordable in your building." Is that kind of what you're getting at?
And I'm completely understanding that that's unreasonable to a property owner who needs to make up for all of the building.
Not if you cover their costs. You just have to cover their costs.
But what's out there for us to potentially go into it and say, "Here's, this is going to work for you, too, but we're going to be able to get some rents in that space?"
So, it's not a crazy question at all, right? So, let's suppose somebody, they didn't get to the finish line, but they're almost at the finish line. Let's suppose the project is dragged out in such a way that they had anticipated 5 percent construction money, and it turned into 7 percent construction money. And now, suddenly, they're $250,000 over here and $300,000 over there, and now they're going to go out into the market and try to lease it up, right? You could certainly approach a developer who's moving to, or an owner who's just purchased that, or a developer who's looking to sell that, and provide a tax concession, right, for an agreement to have a long-term lease on some percentage of their units. If I owned that, and you came to me as the municipality and said, "I'll pick up 5 percent of your units, hands down. You don't have to market it, you don't have to do anything. I'll just cover the rents. I'll cover the rent differential on that forever," right? No owner would say no to that unless, you know, there was some, something just didn't work, right? But absolutely. So, whether it's a pilot, you could also refinance it for them. If they came in, for instance, and their loans are here, you could, in theory, you know, have access to superior financing, and then you hold the mortgage on them. I mean, yeah, absolutely, you can do that.
I, that is great to hear that there's, that's exactly what I was getting at, was that I think there's probably those types of options. Also, what I think would be really something to think about, too, is just out of the hands of the developer, and what the city could potentially think about doing is, is there, are there funds that are available that we could make available for someone who's trying to meet that gap to rent? Like, is there a renters' fund where someone could apply and get them into the unit for even, I know I've been a renter before, you have to put down, you know, the first and the last month's rent. Can we start covering the last month's rent to get somebody into a unit, and then they go? I just, and I think that's actually working with the people who own the buildings to do that, so.
You could certainly set up a program for the first month in, came out, or the last month out, right? You could even, to Charles's point, you could You could even, to Charles' point, you could master lease 5% of those units. If they were charging $2,000 and you thought the affordable rate was five, or 1,500 a month, you just have to line up, budget a line item for that $500 difference on a monthly basis for each of those units, right? It costs money, right, to close that gap, or help them refinance if you have access to that, or a tax abatement, a payment in lieu of, something like that, right? There are options, yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things here. First of all, I just really wanna thank CZB for taking this, like, very, very complicated subject matter and making it accessible enough that we have a lot of good questions on it. No questions means usually we don't understand it, so, so thank you for that. And I just, I wanna kind of take it high level for a second, get out of the weeds, and I just wanna sort of check in again about like the intent and purpose of the conversation we're having tonight and, and just if I, hopefully restating the obvious, but we, we got the grant from DOLA and you guys have been engaged to help us better understand like what are, you know, our existing assets, what are different ways that we can address affordability in our community so that we, you can bring forward some, you know, a toolkit for us that we then can set policy off of? Is that like high level, the process that we're going through here?
That sounds like a good encapsulation.
Okay, all right, perfect. And the only reason I, I bring that is that, you know, when, when I think about, when we get a study like this and it initiates a series of policy setting, much like the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy has done, you know, we're, we're all really excited about our understanding of our community today. We are, you know, Lutheran's looming, but this is something that's gonna be serving our community for, for years. And so I think it's really important as we have this discussion to not get, I mean, we don't wanna lose track of Lutheran, which is our biggest leverage we have in the city, to actually catalyze some affordability, but I think really, you know, keeping the, the 10 to 20-year timeframe in mind to make sure that as market shifts and different opportunities come up that aren't obvious to us today, that we, what we don't have right now is any type of operating policy. We have a city manager who has the good sense to put some pressure on some developers to help, you know, get some of that stuff. So, I think, I think it's really good for us to be thinking, you know, what are those key opportunities that we know of, we wanna catalyze, you know, while some of us are still seated, hopefully? But, but then how, how are we making sure that we've got some, some policies in place that as market conditions change and different housing conditions change, that we are proactively ensuring that, that we as a city are making sure that people who wanna call Wheat Ridge Home or already called Wheat Ridge Home and need to stay here, like, have that opportunity? So that's kind of my little context thing. So, so a question on the inclusionary zoning, and I don't wanna hang on it too much 'cause I'm not necessarily a fan of it, but it is a way for us to leverage investment into the city, to make sure that investment into the city is serving all of the city. Are there examples in the past of inclusionary zoning policies that much, sort of like Councilor Ohm was saying, that actually like, if you're increasing the density, it's, it's tied more to the land than like the number of units you're building so that we don't have someone who's doing that like, well, if I trigger five, I'm gonna, you know, hit, so I'm gonna always do four, and then those fours are always gonna be bigger and it's gonna drive up housing prices, right? Like we, we do, much like Councilor Dozeman was saying, we can create conditions where we're actually augmenting our, our housing affordability problem. So, looking at land or is there inclusionary zoning, or maybe it's some other type of fee or in lieu of, for any type of improvement? When we were upstairs workshopping and you were calling attention to all of the existing unimproved three-dimensional space on every, you know, square foot of land in the city, could we be capitalizing on those investments that are contributing to increasing the housing cost in the city as, like, as a bigger writ large? Have you come across anything like that?
The two jurisdictions that have successfully, and successfully is open to interpretation, but have successfully debated it, crafted it, passed it, and are coping with it would be San Francisco and Aspen.
Okay.
So both of them really have, have endeavored in the last 20 years to ask the question, what's the real driver, right? And how do we, for want of a better word, this isn't the word that those jurisdictions use, how do we tax the driver so that part of the driving is held responsible for the consequences all throughout? And so in, in San Francisco, there's a very complicated formula for the amount of permits that we, as a city, greenlight in, 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 in various levels of intensity that we know through, through regression analysis are going to trigger an escalation of, of land costs that are going to require us to now double down on our incentives. So we wanna get out of that loop and tax it at the base. And in Aspen, they tax above a certain square footage on the argument that residential real estate of a certain size, beyond a certain size, becomes a, a trigger for job generators where most of those jobs are below $20 an hour, thereby requiring a housing subsidy. So they're built into the system. Those are the two that come to mind.
Got it, thank you. And then the other comment that, or I guess observation is, you know, I, coming into this, I was really thinking to my, I was thinking to myself as opposed to thinking to others, which is usually called talking. I was thinking about, you know, the, the base assumption, so often when we talk about affordable housing, we are really focused on like, you know, owning a house is this sort of American dream or entitlement or something like that, and then we're always endeavoring to get people. And I think, you know, we're, we're recognizing even for people who are in the comfortably can afford whatever they want, they're still opting into renting. And so I think, you know, providing, providing good rentals as an option for those target demographics we talked about is a really robust strategy. That having been said, I'm so aware that I'm at like the younger end of the cusp of wealth generation through housing cost. And a program that used to exist that I really liked a lot was the Mayor's Caucus Funds, that was a pooling of funds that actually provided 3% down payment that was, I believe it was like a deferred, if you stayed in the house for three to five years, then it was forgiven. And, and it was oftentimes allowed FHA purchasers to buy their homes. And so, I, I don't wanna leave off the table some sort of program that allows, I mean, it would be exceptionally limited in how much it could fund, but I think a lot of the legacy of Wheat Ridge is we have a lot of multi-generational families here and, and, you know, the NRS, one of the purposes was like, we want people to feel like they can, you know, put deep roots here, that's part of our city. So, I'd, I'd like, at least one of the considerations is, is there some sort of down payment assistance or program like that where we can help people establish themselves in the community but also generate wealth through their housing burden?
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one of the things that we had looked at in a, a past study session was bonus density. So, you know, which it seems to me like it could go kind of hand in hand with inclusionary housing policies where it could be, you know, we'll give you X, X more density if you give us X affordability or attainability. And so, you know, I think that I'd like to potentially see some of that in, in the plan that comes back. Another thing is, one of our citizens, thank you Vivian, I'm sure you're watching, sent me an email with an article attached, and there was the Initiative 108, which they just dropped off their signatures to try to get onto the ballot, where it earmarked 0.1% of 1% of the Colorado income tax for affordable housing, which could generate up to $300 million a year. And, and communities that have plans that are ready, that you can hit the ground running with, will, they'll get priority on that money. And so, you know, I think that we're in a really good place, like, our timing wise is really good for us to be doing this. While yes, we're a little bit behind the ball on, you know, our infill housing building the way that it's gone with our TOD site in Clear Creek Crossing, we already kind of missed the ball there, but I think we're in a really good place with, hopefully, you know, if that passes. One thing that I'd also like to mention is that I, I very much feel like it's important for us to look at preserving what we have in the 50,000 to 75,000 market, what we have out there. You know, you know, people say all the time, oh, you do have affordable housing. And again, what is the life quality of that housing? You know, like I said, I toured one with my daughter and it's not safe, you know, it has an amenity, which is really, two pools actually, which are actually in really great shape. But then the buildings themselves are not in really great shape and, and, you know, the security doors aren't secure. So I would really, really like for us to, you know, put a lot of time and thought into that as being a, a main piece of what we do with, with our affordable housing moving forward.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. As Charles pointed out about trying to kind of pay the way, other cities are doing linkage fees on non-residential development. What is there, how does, I guess, is that a success, or is that, is that something we should consider?
Do you want to take that or do I need to speak to it?
Linkage is pretty proven. It's a, it, you just, again, just, just as you begin to think through the contours of an inclusionary policy, you have to, for want of a better way to describe it, don't get too greedy in, you know, what, what you come to the negotiating table with. You don't wanna push the development away, so make sure that the linkage is grounded in some sense of reality. But yes, linkage is, we totally encourage that.
Councilor Weaver?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with what Councilors Hulteen and Hoppe had said. I, I came to this meeting today really not stressed, if you will, on, on how we were going to find some quick pathways forward and, and knowing that there are these larger pathways with things that will be built and great ideas. But I just wanted to follow up with that income level between 50 and 75 and, and really spending some money or incentivizing the, the current housing we do have for that income group and making it safe and making it better. And, and even to, to Ms. Hoppe's point, you know, maybe we should be getting out there and going on some of these tours and sort of understanding what these, what these affordability levels look like in the market. So thank you for that.
Mayor, do you mind if I just jump in really quick?
You got another slide or two to...
Uh, yeah. First, I just want a quick response to something, a couple of things that were raised. I wanna call attention to something Rachel said earlier, which is envisioning sort of a longer-term system and policy as opposed to a series of one-offs. And the city has had the opportunity to, both the need and the opportunity to be involved in some way, shape, or form in a lot of the most important deals that have happened in the city in recent years. And that always allows an entry point to get some community benefits out of that, and that's good. But we can potentially envision a day when things, just development in general runs more smoothly in Wheat Ridge for a variety of reasons, maybe it's regulatory changes, maybe it's market conditions, some, some combination thereof. And it won't be that every deal that wants to happen here has to come to City Hall and work it out. It might just be sort of stuff that happens more run-of-the-mill, more by right, less negotiation. Excuse me. So envisioning a day when that could be the case, you wanna make sure that you have a foundation in place that it can sort of, run itself isn't the right phrase, but where regulation can be applied normally and things can happen in the normal course of business and you still get what the community wants. So that's really important. Janice, you raised the issue of sort of a base and bonus system. I think that's definitely something to look at, whereas, again, not like a one-off or a sort of a conditional rezoning or something like that, that's maybe a bit questionable, but rather, there's an underlying zoning allowance and it is what it is, but if there's a community benefit like affordability, then it can, you know, tick up to the next level of density, for instance. That's certainly a, a system that is out there as well and something that could be considered. I, I do wanna just, Mayor, we have one more slide, it's relevant to some things that people have raised, and just wanna finish that off quickly and then we can kind of go back to questions, comments, discussions, and wrap up to get you onto your next business item, if that's okay?
Good.
Okay. Last thing, as we have discussed and looked at in the income bands, again, not impossible to get to homeownership in six figures, but below $150,000 in income, but difficult and getting more difficult. There are a number of tried and true programs, tools in the toolbox to do that, whether it's buyer assistance, even direct purchase programs to sort of put into an affordable, rotating affordable ownership stock with shared equity arrangements. So for instance, if the city were to help somebody buy a home, and that would be restricted on the amount of appreciation that could be captured by that owner, the purpose would be, yes, the owner, the first owner of that house gets some appreciation, but it's shared with the city who made the investment upfront. And that also allows it to sort of, to stay in the inventory to remain affordable and then be resold to an income-qualified household again. De-restrictions go along with that. There may be a role for a land trust. So to sort of control and limit the appreciation of the underlying land is another way to help keep an ownership unit affordable over time. So, this is, this territory for ownership is well-worn and something that we can, if council's interested in it, we can certainly say more about that as we go forward. And that was the last thing that we had to talk about in terms of tools in the toolbox. And just wanted to make sure that we're keeping our eyes on these key questions that we've got for tonight. We certainly talked about the interventions, which ones are interesting, which ones the council's got energy around, but also this issue of target markets. And as you think through what this strategy might be, you know, what are the households that you're thinking about? Totally okay if the households you're thinking about is also a function of what you think the city can do best. So for instance, we talked about that zero to 50 band, and that's a place where there's a sort of system that handles that more directly than the city government can. And if you were to say, maybe that's not the place where we need to totally focus, except when those providers come to us and are looking for some kind of assistance, you know, that's a way you could look at that particular issue. You might say, we see what you've said about the inclusionary. It seems like an inclusionary approach on new rental units might get us to that 75 to 100 band, and that's a need as well in some way, shape, or form, and so that sounds good. Or you might say, eh, those people are fine, they'll find rents, you know, rentals on their own. Any and all of that feedback is helpful to us as well as you're thinking this through and making your comments here tonight or talking to us again in the future.
Thank you. Councilor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with a lot of my colleagues, I think that we, everybody kind of has their favorite of the tools in the toolbox, but I think kind of like was said earlier, we need to be turning a bunch of little dials here because we don't have a big bat to swing. We, you know, we don't have the Candellas and different things like that that we can expand into. We have Lutheran and then a lot of infill. So, I think given what we have as resources as a community, dealing with that zero to 50, we need to, you know, continue to partner with Woodhills Housing and, and, and doing that. But where I think we can be the strongest is from 50 to 75 and, 75 and up. So, you know, having that inclusionary zoning somewhere in there for especially density projects, like we, we've had some infill projects go in on 38th recently, it might've been nice even as a use by right to have some of those as, some sort of subsidized or something like that. And as we, you know, kind of look at some of those higher, I like the idea of the homeownership because when you buy into a community like that, even if it's, you're only gonna receive some sort of appreciation in that house, you're buying in, you're gonna be here for a while. And, and part of the NRS was that we wanted to bring in strong families and, and help fill our schools and, and that sort of thing, and that's, that's one of the ways we do that. So, I think we need to turn all those little dials and, and get everything going that way and really focus from 50 up. How do we help those renters in that segment? And then how do we get some of those to buy and be here long-term, 30, 50 years? And then, one thing, when, when, you know, I was campaigning and we have a lot of those apartments that you're talking about in District 3, we have those older apartments, you know, those guys are always saying, you do everything for the new developers coming in, but we always kind of get left out. So if we can help incentivize those guys, the, you know, the people on Kipling, the people on 38th Avenue, to reinvest in their property and have the city somehow do that and, and then keep some of those units affordable, I think that would be a, a big home run. And the appetite in our community for a lot of new development and a lot of density, it's hit or miss. So I think where it is is important, but, you know, at the moment especially, I don't feel like we have a lot of appetite for that. So, we, I think we wanna really focus on what we have and make that better for... So we, I think we want to really focus on what we have and make that better for people to live here long-term. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
I would just like us to note and remember that a lot of those older buildings are very small buildings with few units. And so I just want to make sure that whatever policies we think about implementing and incentives are for those 10 and under units as well.
Right. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. I really like the idea of focusing on that 50 to 75 and then 75 and over with the different strategies, in part because we do have other partners that are doing a good job and will do a better job of addressing people in the lower-income brackets. And as far as interventions that we should focus on, one thing that comes to mind to me is there are things that we can play around with that don't require actual resources on our part, like for, I mean, it's, we need to build our coiffers. We are looking at sequestering our ADU, or not ADU, our Airbnb tax to go towards attainable housing or affordable housing strategy. But, you know, big interventions that actually take programmatic support from us, we're going to have to build our coiffers somehow. And so as we're looking at the different strategies, it's just good for us to be mindful, like what can we get out of the gate on that we don't have to do some sort of significant budgeting or revenue generation for. So as we continue that conversation, maybe calling attention to, these are regulatory negotiating things that goes back out to the market to solve for us versus what do we need to fund and do. And then, let's see, I made a note here and I've probably already forgotten it. Oh, one thing I just want to mention, when we talk about the strategy, which I'm also very, very supportive of, investing back into our existing stock, one thing that I learned from working with you guys during the NRS that has really stood out to me and has actually made me really proud of who we are as a city, is that actually our, a lot of the housing stock we're talking about, which is this kind of like, you know, outdated rentals, are actually really dispersed throughout our city. And so that's actually creating, you know, housing opportunities that are in all of our neighborhoods. It's not about this one part of town or like, you know, these couple of different areas. Like, we were just really unique in that we have, some of our most affordable places are across the street from some of our most expensive houses. And when you actually map it, it is a really uniquely dispersed model. So in doing that, we're actually building these really strong communities and that it is truly integrated and these will be investments in our own neighborhoods throughout the city. And I think that's part of why that strategy is really attractive to me as part of who we are as a city. So, thanks.
Thank you. Don't see any more questions. Good discussion. Does that give you sort of the information that you all were looking for, the direction or the affirmation that we're at a pathway that we want to continue down?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. This is great.
And we're due to hear back from you later this year or early next year?
It'll be in the fall.
In the fall? Okay. Terrific. Well, Eric, Charles, Thomas, thank you all for coming to us tonight. We appreciate the time this afternoon and the workshop and your presentation tonight in the public forum.
Always a pleasure.
So thank you so much, and we look forward to hearing more back from you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Yes, yes, we may take, we'll just take a few minutes here until we get to our second item, if you wish to be excused for a few minutes.
Number two. Okay, I'd like to reconvene our meeting, our study session for the City of Wheat Ridge City Council for August the 15th, 2022. So we'll move now to agenda, item number two. This is a discussion of 2023 budget requests from the Carnation Festival, the Wheat Ridge Business District, and Local Works. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Not really a staff presentation, but you summarized it pretty well. We have a rowdy crowd over there tonight. So we'll just let them get going. But typically, tonight, we're going to do something a little bit different, but we usually bring these three different groups in, our partners out in the community, to give their, their next year's budget requests and presentation. Tonight, we're just going to really focus on Local Works, since they have a lot of new things going on. And Carnation Festival and the Wheat Ridge Business District, their request letter is in your packet. So they're here this evening. We have some representatives. We're not going to put them in the spotlight. They're not going to have to present this evening because it's pretty status quo of what they've been asking for. But if you have any questions for either of those groups, they'll be here. But, so we'll turn it over to Local Works.
I'm sorry, Patrick, can we, before we do that? Is there any way we can get a consensus on Carnation Festival and Wheat Ridge Business just seeing as how they're here and then they can go if they want to?
So they can leave? Or take any questions first, real quick? What do you think?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Let's move to the Wheat Ridge Business District.
So they're requesting 90,000. That's what they've been requesting for the last several years. So not a lot of changes, but you have, again, you have in your packet a memo from Joseph Demott, who is the board chair of the Wheat Ridge Business District. They're asking for $40,000, $45,000 for their matching grant programs and $45,000 for their facade plus program. Again, that's similar to what they asked for in the past. And we did include in the packet this year a list of projects that they've funded since 2017 through this year. Gives you an idea of the different impacts this grant funding has had on the community. So any questions for the Wheat Ridge Business District?
Questions on that or discussion on that? Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have really any questions. I sat on that board for 10 years and it's nice to see some of these projects on here. But I just would like to point out that we also have our mayor and two city council representatives on that board, too. I support what they do. I appreciate they're in our community and I know that they're prudent with our city dollars and I support their request for 90,000.
Additional discussion. Counselor Stites.
I will just say, I've been on the board for, I don't know, five, six years now. This is one of my favorite things that I do in the City of Wheat Ridge. We actually get to help the businesses directly. You can see some of the big wins on here, including the Stylus and Cray and the Bardot House and all of those, so 100% support this.
Additional discussion. All those in favor of giving consensus to move forward with the $90,000 mark? Okay, looks like we have unanimous consent on that one. So we will move to the next one, which would be, let's talk about the Carnation Festival budget.
Great. And very similarly, you have a memo in your packet from the Carnation Festival Committee, and they are requesting the same amount that we gave them this year, 125,000. And you can see a budget broken down, pretty, a lot of detail on the revenues and expenditures. So you just, Festival was just completed, went very well. So if you were there, you see where your money's being spent.
If you missed it, it'll be around next year. So discussion. Counselor Weaver.
I completely support it. And I also wanted to just comment with the rides you did. I advanced with so many families and they were very, 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 very involved.
The Midway, or the Midway, is that what it's? Yeah.
The Mechanics on the Midway?
Well, they're just the different, fun stuff that people can do.
Kind of the big balls in the water looked kind of fun to me. It looked, you know, I wanted to dive in there. Great. Additional discussion. Councilperson Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I want to congratulate the Carnation Festival Board for another successful event. They put thousands of hours of volunteer hours in each and every year. It's a wonderful group to be a part of and we're very grateful for the city's support, not only in funding it, but also providing all of the security and the logistics throughout the entire weekend. So it's very much appreciated and we thank you.
Okay. Do we have a consensus to move forward at the $125 level times 1,000? We're trying to save a couple of bucks here, so, all right, very good. So we have unanimous consent to move that forward. So, you know, I see Joe here. Joe, do we have any more questions that we needed to address on those two things? Thanks for the work that you do on that, keeping those programs going.
Presser awake.
Yep, yep. Okay. Then we've got those two.
Now we'll move on to Local Works.
Let's go on to Local Works.
All right. Now I'll introduce Paige Piper, the new executive director of Local Works. Been a month now, Paige?
Three months.
Three months. Oh, my God, really? And then we have a good group of the board here tonight, so that's great. Yeah, thanks for coming.
Very good, yes. Thank you. Please join us here.
Well, it's great to be here.
Are you turned on there? It's got to be light. There you go.
Awesome, awesome start. Don't know how to work the mic, so. But no, it's great to be here with you all tonight. I have Tad Overstreet with me, also known as The Count, famous person, so. But no, we are, we're humbled and honored to be here. Yes, that is a ton of our board back there. I tried to get them to wear a matching shirt. They did not agree to it, so the best I could do was at least they showed up. I am honored to work with that board on a daily basis, and before we make this request, I just want to thank them for their tireless hours that they put into this organization. But I've had the pleasure to meet with most of you, but my name is Paige Piper and I am the new executive director of Local Works. We're going to go over our 2023 budget request, but moreover, what's included in this budget request and what you'll see in your memo is really a long-term strategic plan. What do the next three years look like for Local Works and how does this budget request build off of that for the future of Wheat Ridge? And then following that, Tad and I are happy to take questions, mostly Tad. So what is really the theme of this year's budget request and what is the theme of Local Works moving forward strategically? What we really think about what we do and why we do it is we're taking a What we really think about what we do and why we do it is we're, we're taking a moment to reset and we're not taking a moment to reset because, because we have to. We're taking a moment to reset to really be thoughtful about what we do moving forward and how we're impacting both the City of Wheat Ridge businesses and residents. So you'll see that in this year's budget request, the format is a little bit different and we're really focusing on three pillars of why Local Works was created in 2005, known as Wheat Ridge 2020 and our new trade name is Local Works, and how we're going back to those roots and re-establishing them in the community. So the budget request this year really focuses on economic development, community connection and communication, and promoting an improved image for Wheat Ridge. So the economic development piece, we're going to talk about events and programs, business corridor identities, including Ridge at Thirty-Eight, and community connection and communication. We'll talk more about how we're going to implement new communication methods to prevent community deterioration and develop access and activities to greater community member involvement. When a resident moves to Wheat Ridge, how do they feel that this is a place that they can thrive, grow and live? And then finally, promoting an improved image for Wheat Ridge. How is Local Works really becoming in the next several years and specifically this year? An information hub for the community, our business loan program and our home improvement loan program. So we're just going to go over just a quick overview of accomplishments that we have, have accomplished, for lack of a better term, this fiscal year, and what we plan to accomplish since it's still August and there's still a lot of work to do this fiscal year. But we have, we will have hosted four TLC dumpster day cleanups. Our next one is actually this Saturday at Wheat Ridge United Methodist Church. If you need to, to dump anything, we take literally everything. Last month, we took a scooter, someone's motorized scooter, so we literally take everything. No, it was given to us, you know. We've also done nine total dumpster grants in the community, so neighbors can apply for dumpster grants to clean up their, their neighborhood. We have launched our first community calendar on our website, which is going to become more and more, more and more mature, I guess I'll say, for community members to really be able to put in events that they're involved with, so when they serve on boards that they're passionate about in the community, making sure that we have those events on our calendar, businesses, things like that. We've hosted nine block parties so far. We are budgeted to host fifteen and we have received our fifteenth application this year. So the block parties have been really popular. And we've relaunched our newsletter. It's now called The Local Word and getting, really making sure that communication's getting out to business owners, residents, and we're sending that monthly. And then finally, the Makerspace. And I wanted to end on this note because this is a, it's a strategic initiative that we're going to talk a lot about tonight and the accomplishments that I've already been able to be seen through the spaces is really, really, it's an honor to watch, it's humbling to see. So we have had four hundred-plus cumulative volunteer hours just since January inside the Makerspace. So when we think about the Ridge Fest event that we held this year and the castle-making activity for kids and families that really got rave reviews, that was a ton of volunteer hours that went into that. We've had volunteer hours in the form of people just coming and helping us understand what does a Makerspace mean in the Wheat Ridge community and making sure that we are talking to those stakeholders and understanding what it is and how we can make it better. And we've introduced a lot of new tools inside the Makerspace this year. So we've introduced a Glowforge into the space and we actually had someone come in and make custom leather wedding invites. And we've also introduced a 3D printer and we're slowly starting to understand how do we host a 3D printing 101 class here this quarter. Okay, so moving on to 2023 programs and really why we're all here is this year's budget request. So the Makerspace and Ridge Fest, that is going to be the first category inside your budget. It's under the Wheat Ridge Creates line item. We are requesting eighty-five thousand dollars in this line item, fifty thousand dollars to go into the Makerspace Initiative and thirty-five thousand dollars to go into Ridge Fest. The thirty-five thousand dollars for Ridge Fest is a lot of the hard and soft costs for the event, so party rentals, things like that, and staff time to make it happen. With Ridge Fest this year, we want to make sure that we continue to have the Maker Fair space inside of Ridge Fest. That was a new addition this year, so we had twelve vendors of makers that were showcasing things that they make, showcasing to the community how to make those things. And it was really one of the highlights and the biggest piece of feedback that we got that the community felt like it was a place of inclusivity for them this year, that they felt like they could be anyone and come to Ridge Fest and know that they have an identity specifically, specifically with that Maker Fair. And then the fifty thousand dollars into the Makerspace, this is going to be a lot of programmatic requests. So understanding what classes can we hold and the hard and soft costs that go with that, properly marketing and getting the word out about the Makerspace and doing somewhat of a relaunch in January 2023 with our membership structure. And what you'll see in this year's budget request, and we'll go into more detail about this entire section of the budget, which is, which is new, I think, to council, is what is Local Works doing and how are we diversifying our funds? And you will see that Local Works is committed to putting two hundred thousand of our own dollars into the Makerspace this year and those dollars are going to be put towards renovation for the new space that we are hoping to move into, as well as equipment purchases. So making sure we have more 3D printers available, making sure that we have tools available for the wood shop, the woodworking shop, things like that. And so I know that I've talked to many of you about this and the concept of a Makerspace and I was, I am a person that is guilty of this, too. It's really hard to imagine until you really see it fully up and running. And what we have going on in the church right now is extremely exciting and it's, it's awesome to see the involvement, but we are looking to make this so much bigger. And so when we strategically think about where this is going and what this budget request this year will allow us to do to move forward and grow, is the Makerspace is really becoming an incubator for entrepreneurship in our community and creativity. So the goal and what has happened at other Makerspaces in the United States is that new businesses are formed inside of these spaces. So an engineer can meet an artist and say, you know, I have this crazy idea for a product that I want to sell. The product is created inside the Makerspace and a new business is born inside of that economy. So that's the goal for Wheat Ridge, is it's not just a place for people to come be creative and use their personal passions for creativity, which we know Wheat Ridge has an appetite and roots in. We are a very creative community. We're a very artsy community and we want to honor that and have a place for those that live here to use it, but it's also a place for business entrepreneurship and incubation. And so classes that will hold inside the Makerspace include welding, include 3D, 3D printing 101, include woodworking, but it also includes another facet of business and how people make things, which are ideas. So we'll hold a class of how do you properly pitch your product? How do you properly brand yourself when you're first starting out? How can we help you design your logo inside the Makerspace? So the Makerspace Strategic Plan, the first part of it is the investment from Local Works and the budget requests that are coming to you tonight for the fifty thousand dollars in that line item. And as I mentioned, Local Works is committed and the board is very excited to invest two hundred thousand dollars of our own funds into the Makerspace because we know that this is a viable option for our community and a program that our community needs. We'll hold classes and the Makerspace with the classes will have a revenue structure that by the end of 2024, we expect to have made twelve thousand dollars. For the membership structure, this is something that can be really, really big for our community and the membership revenues that will be generated will go right back into the Makerspace. So how are our members getting a better experience inside the Makerspace when they're paying for membership? And we anticipate by the end of 2024 that we can generate just under fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue each year, just from membership alone inside this Makerspace. And the Makerspace will have a membership structure as well, that membership is not required to use it. We actually had a great conversation with a Jeff, a Jeffco teacher at the Carnation Festival this weekend, who we talked about the Makerspace and she said, gosh, this would be a great place for me to come and get my classroom ready, like make things for my classroom. So for things like that, we would not charge membership or be highly discounted for those that are serving the, the future of our community. And then the other piece of this budget request, and you'll see that we've tried to simplify our budget line items so it can make more concise sense, is the business promotion and resident engagement. So there's five things that we'll talk about in this, which includes Live Local, Business Block Parties, Business Corridor, identities, retention and growth for our businesses, and then citizen growth and passion for incubation. So Live Local, as I know many of y'all are familiar with, we are now committed to hosting one Live Local event a month. But really, the goal of Live Local moving forward is to make sure that we're not only getting that resident engagement piece and community piece of why Local Works was created, but that we're tapping into our economic development roots. So we're getting foot traffic inside of our businesses. So for example, there's this coffee shop called Stylist and Crate. It's pretty cool and we hosted a Live Local event there in July. We had thirty-five community members come join us for a Coffee 101. Tad talked about blending of coffee and how if you just put even two more beans of a specific roast inside your coffee blend, it'll taste completely different. And residents walked away with their own custom blend. So like Leah, if Leah would have, we'll say Leah came, she was there in spirit, it would have been the Dozeman Coffee Blend. So those are things within the Live Local events that we really want to be able to continue to do. And the next one is actually on Wednesday and we are taking a cruiser ride over to Em's Ice Cream. And we have forty-nine people registered, so best of luck on a very long cruiser ride. But it's things like that where we want to make sure that businesses here have foot traffic inside of their business and that they're creating those relationships. So for Tad over at Stylist and Crate, when we hosted this, it was an opportunity for him to meet new regulars. And I believe, you said you've gotten a couple?
Yep. We make their own custom blends now that came back with their own recipe.
So people, this is, this is what we mean by the community and how we want to create community within Live Local and tap into the economic development roots. For the other piece of Live Local and what we're trying to rethink is block parties have, have always lived inside of the Live Local sphere, but how are we hosting not just block parties for neighbors, but block parties for businesses? So another example is the Gold's Marketplace. You know, that's a really, really exciting renovation, especially for someone that grew up in Wheat Ridge and used to shop at Gold's Grocery. I applied for my first job there and I didn't get it. I was devastated. And to see that, that branding change and really see it become this hub of, of where a ton of people are going to gather as a community, Local Works wants to support that. So we're going to start business block parties specifically. So we're going to host a block party in the spring of 2023 for Gold's Marketplace. We'll bring in a live band, we'll put overflow into Paramount Park and it'll be a time for neighbors to come, not only mingle, mingle with their neighborhood, but mingle with the new business owners. So you're starting those one-on-one relationships for the business owners. For the Business Corridor identities, Local Works is really wanting to put new efforts into this piece. So the Ridge at Thirty-Eight brand is something that we're very honored to have had the opportunity to work with the city on to, to now manage and continue to grow, but I don't think that we should stop at Ridge at Thirty-Eight. So this is where that strategic mindset comes into place, that this budget request is going to launch us into, into forward thinking. And so how are we creating a business identity for Forty-Fourth? How are we creating a business identity for Twenty-Ninth? And then how is Local Works managing that? That's the big goal and that's where that budget line item request comes in here, is that we want to better manage Ridge at Thirty-Eight and we want to take the time to really understand, is there more of a fit for more business corridor identities in our community and how is that powerfully impacting our business community? And then finally, the citizen growth piece, which is community outreach and business promotion inside of the budget. We're really looking to redefine and build programs that we had in the past that I think that we, we need to bring back to understand if there's still an appetite for them. So something specific and Counselor Holti and I, actually, we had a great conversation about this, is, is Wheat Ridge 101 and how are we taking that to the next level? So what does a Wheat Ridge 102 or 201 look like? And how are we taking those graduates and creating the next bench of people that are involved in our community, that may be the next city council members, that may be serving on boards and task forces? And how are we making sure that their voice is heard and that we're incubating that passion for Wheat Ridge at the next step? We've also talked about a passport program for Wheat Ridge, which I know has been tried before, but it's something that I want to go down, down trying, if I have to, but try and make it successful. So what does a passport look like? How do we really make it work for businesses inside of Wheat Ridge? And how, how do we make sure that when a young family moves into Wheat Ridge that they say, gosh, this is so cool. It's like the Denver Passport, but it's better because it's Wheat Ridge. So that's, that's the goal with, with citizen growth and making sure that we have that passion of incubation and that we're getting people involved. So as we're finishing up here, and this is the part of the budget that, that's probably going to look very new to y'all, is that Local Works' commitment and long-term funding strategy is changing and we're going on a direction of making sure that we're diversifying our funds and that we are matching the dollars that we're getting from the city to grow what Local Works can do in our community. So we're going to really tap into Colorado Gives Day this year. We're going to do our first ever next fall, an annual fundraiser for Local Works. We'll start with a golf tournament and call it the Farmer Scramble. The farmer mascot might be present, we'll see. We're really, we're really leaning into, to grants and how are we looking at grant opportunities with, with funders, both for the Makerspace and the Local Works mission? I've already had really, really amazing conversations with the Denver Foundation and the Virginia Hill Foundation, which is under Wells Fargo, about the work that Local Works does and they are interested in making sure that our work remains. And then finally, the Makerspace piece, which we talked about, to become a revenue generation for Local Works to just carry us further. So with that, I, I know y'all have had a long day, but I really did want to take the time to, to try and give you a high-level overview in the memo that we sent about where Local Works is heading and that we are really excited. We're excited to try new things. We're excited to fail. When you try new things, we will fail, but we will always stand up and keep fighting for this community because that's why Local Works was created. So we really appreciate your time and all that you all have done for Local Works in the past and we will be happy to take questions.
Counselor Nosler Beck?
Paige, way to go. Like, seriously, great work. This is awesome. I feel so heard after our conversation in your presentation tonight and I'm, I'm pretty sure that my fellow counselors probably are experiencing that, too. And so I, I'm just so grateful to have you really, with all your energy, going forward with this. And so, thank you. I, I love seeing that there's a strategic fundraising plan so that Local Works can remain, but it can also go up and launch and do what, what Local Works can go do in the community. I do just have a couple of things I wanted to ask about, specifically on the Makerspace. With Makerspace, I think that I'm at a place where I'm understanding what that is and I'm sure the board is really understanding what it is and what we're going to try and do with this, but I think it's going to take a lot of outreach and basically marketing to our community about what that space is. And if we're really going after entrepreneurs, we, we can't go after the usual people who are participating in the community right now. It's going to need to get kind of creative there and I, and part of what I'd like to suggest is if we can make sure that we're offering our marketing in both English and Spanish and potentially other languages to make sure that it's accessible to everyone in our community. And also with that, that we're just, we're really focusing on that it is ADA accessible to, 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 to potential entrepreneurs. I also would just suggest, so many members of your board are probably involved in financial services and some of the housing things that are going on. If there's ways for, at the Makerspace, as we're building an entrepreneur kind of incubator, that people are also learning some of those skills, that would be awesome. And then I just, I started a business two years ago and one of the most valuable things that I needed as I was building a business was conference room space. And if there's a way for membership as, to the Makerspace, to be able to, to rent that space, to invite people in, invite people to Wheat Ridge, to learn about your business, that'd be awesome. So those were some of my suggestions there and I just want to give a huge shout out to some of the ideas of starting to look at Twenty-Ninth and Forty-Fourth as some corridors to, to focus on as well. And also, I love the Wheat Ridge 201 idea. Thank you so much to the entire board. Congratulations, Count.
Thanks. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Paige, I agree with everything that Councilwoman Nosler Beck said. I think that you hit it out of the park tonight. One thing I really appreciate is that this is a pretty deep One thing I really appreciate is that this is a pretty detailed budget. And in the past, the Local Works budget has always been a little bit murky. And we had to kind of guess at what things were. So this is very helpful, so we really appreciate that. I also appreciate that you're using your own money to reinvest back into that and not just asking for the city to do that. Everything that Councilwoman Nosler Beck said, I one-hundred percent agree with. Councilperson Ohm, a couple of weeks ago, brought up maybe working with Wheat Ridge High School for the Makerspace. But I would also say like Everett and some of their technology classes and different things like that, the more that we can get those kids involved and seeing what's going on there and, and really helping that, that entrepreneurial spirit at a younger age, I think that's going to really help our community as well. So fantastic, I think you did a great job. I one-hundred percent support what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Holte.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And Paige, thank you. You are really bringing, I would say, just a refreshing enthusiasm for where we are right now and what, what's ahead. And I think it's, it's really nice to actually hear that you're, you're taking what's working and really trying to figure out like what needs to work next. And so that makes it a lot easier to understand, you know, what is the city investing in with our partnership with Local Works next year? And it's really, not a lot of questions come out of your presentation, so I just really appreciate that. So I just have a couple of comments, and then I actually do have a question. So like Ms. Nosler Beck mentioned, I really liked seeing the fundraising goals and that you're taking a strategic approach to going after grants and developing those relationships with, with grant funding partners. I think, you know, when, when Local Works was operating at its best, it was because of grants coming in. And through those grants, we actually understand better what we're capable of doing as a community. So I think, not just in the financial sense, but like the grants actually build capacity. And so I think that's really fantastic. And the communications refresh, I think, is really important too. I think that's something, that's a huge value that Local Works brings and can reach people in different ways. And having a rhythm of, you know, relevant information in a way that's like exciting and inviting for people to get engaged is really at the heart of the community building, which is, you know, the, the soft stuff that we, we can't do as a city, but really depend on your success. So it's, it's great to see that shining through here. The, the couple of questions I have, so, so in your category of Wheat Ridge Creates, I will admit, I at times get a little bit confused about Wheat Ridge Creates. And, and I will also, most anyone in this room who knows me knows I love the arts, like public arts is like a passion of mine. So Wheat Ridge Creates is, as an initiative, not as like a budget line item. Can you just kind of speak to that a little bit more? Because sometimes I get a little confused between like, what's the Cultural Commission doing and what's Wheat Ridge Creates? And how programmatically are we, we supporting those in a way that the creatives in our community have a way to, to, you know, connect, you know, connect their art with our community and also feel supported? So can you just kind of speak to Wheat Ridge Creates as a, as a whole? Like what that, what that is?
And we can, Mary Ann is, is in the back too. And, and she's helping manage that. There's some history to it. So if, if you need help, Mary Ann can come up with.
Mary Ann? I just don't want to, I don't want to steal your thunder.
Are you dialing a friend on this?
Well, she's just done so much incredible work that I would not want to misrepresent it.
Okay. And wait, let me throw my follow-up question in, and then maybe you can fold, fold them in. And so, so what as part of this like idea of bringing entrepreneurs together to actually start businesses? Like, what are the specific things that you have in mind as, as Local Works or through other business partnerships to help cultivate those, like when they happen and give them the business support so that they're, they're successful and taking it to the next step?
Yeah, absolutely. I will take that question and pass it to you, Mary Ann. With, with the piece of entrepreneurship and being an incubator inside the Makerspace, we want to, and this is a goal of Local Works that's continued in that community outreach, is really have an awesome working relationship that we, we do, but we want to grow with the Chamber, with the WRBA and with the Wheat Ridge Business District. But also look at this, that it doesn't just have to stay within Wheat Ridge. And tools like the Jeffco EDC are going to be huge when it comes to this. And we've had some really impactful conversations with them about getting them involved in the Makerspace. And what do we do when that flower blooms? And we want to make sure to nurture it and grow it and not let it, not let it fade away. So to answer your question, it's really about making sure that we have the proper relationships in our community, that when a product or something's created in the Makerspace, that there's a clear pathway to say, this is what you do next. And it'll be with those, those relationships. Okay, is it on?
There you go.
All right, so Wheat Ridge Creates, that's a great question. If you guys recall, Wheat Ridge Creates came out of the Art Space Feasibility Study that we did in 2020. And so it was, we actually had Art Space come in in February 2020, which is just kind of mind-boggling to think about the time of all of that. And so one of the outcomes of that, and one of the purposes of that, is the study was funded partially by the city and partially by Local Works. And it was to determine whether or not there was like an appetite for live-work art spaces, Makerspaces, like art community in Wheat Ridge, and really see what was going on. And what we found is that there's this underground network and of artists and creatives in the area. And as we presented to you in June 2020, you guys said, hold tight. Let's see what kind of grassroots support we can do. You know, we're not really at the time where we can provide funding. It's June 2020. And so that was something that, you know, we got that direction from you all was, let's see what we can grow from the ground up. And so what we've done is trying to build community support, community connection. We've got a group now, which is how Wheat Ridge Creates is like the Art Space Core Group became that once the Art Space project was over. And then we've partnered with Local Works has been part of that core team. And then we've had members of the community and local artists and, and other members who have been helping to kind of just continue to grow the idea of creatives and arts and networking and their... So right now, you know, it's a great partnership because we have this, you know, I'm helping on the, the city side of keeping people connected, keeping things, kind of facilitating it moving forward. But then the Makerspace is something that's going to be owned entirely by Local Works. So it's something that we can really partner on moving forward, where they can really help people to develop those, you know, hard skills and give them an opportunity to have a place where they can work. And then we can kind of still help to build the community connection, local meetups and that piece of it.
Thank you so much. That was, that was very helpful. And yeah, it just, this is really exciting. And as we talked about, Paige, that investment in taking civically interested people and connecting them with meaningful actions in our city is at the heart of our civic infrastructure. And so, as you know, I'm very excited about what might be next for that. So thanks for leaning in and looking forward to the year ahead with Local Works.
Thank you, Councilor Weaver.
Thank you. Great presentation, thanks. I just wanted to, to highlight some of the things that I appreciated in what you just presented. Because I think we have so much creativity, not only in the art space and not only in, in business incubation, but to what you were doing with Tad at Stylist and Crate. I mean, there is so much food creativity in the city and, and so much incubation space already around the food aspect of things. And, and I just would love to see more of that. You know, the, the idea of the, of the, I don't know if it was a class or a coffee meetup or, but just really marrying that, that creativity that's already happening with business owners. For those of us who work in kitchens and are, are creating all of the time, I just really like to hear that, that, that the programming is really starting to cross over in, in circles. And that's, that's what I think one of the main goals initially was. So I just really appreciate that, and I thank you for your, for your presentation.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to repeat everything my councilor said, but I will echo, echo everything that they said. We really appreciate all your efforts. And I know we had a great chat over coffee at Stylist and Crate. And really, really appreciate your support and your energy. One of the things that you mentioned was branding. And I just wanted to ask, and Councilor Nosler Beck was also asking about branding. When you provide like the block, like especially like the block party grants, do you, have you thought about adding some type of, you know, brochure flyer with the Local Works Makerspace information? You know, because you're, you're giving that money. I'm having a block party in, in my neighborhood soon. And I would like to see that, to let people know. Because otherwise, they just, they just don't know anything about that Makerspace. And, and that's really where all the entrepreneurs, you know, the people are going to be. There's, there's going to be a lot of them at that block party. And so getting that word out would, I think, really help. And then, and if you want to, I would, I can send you information if you want to attend that block party, if you have time. And then the other, only other question was, I was asking Patrick about some of the committees. And, and one of the things he said was maybe that the Hill Advisory, Heal Advisory Committee was not active. But I see a line item for Heal Active Living. Is that the same thing?
So I believe, I want to make sure I'm going to look at the right thing. Heal Active was in last year's budget. It's not included in this year's.
Yeah, it's, it's, as I mentioned to you, Scott, or Councilman Ohm, it's, it's, we're still considered a Hill city, the city is, but there's really not an active committee. The committee was, and Janice can speak to it. Oh, you have a question? It's, you know, it was made up of, of different community member organizations, Luther and Kaiser, I think Family Tree. We had city staff on it, but it hasn't really, there's not an active committee right now working on anything. Oh, well, Corey, are you part of it, or?
Yeah, I'm on it, but it's, it's been slow. It, we, we slowed down a lot because of COVID and whatnot. So yeah, I don't know.
The reason, probably the reason why it was in the old, old budget for Local Works is because they, because they used to have a staff member attend those meetings.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking is because they newly elected councilmember. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get a handle on like all the different, you know, boards, commissions, committees, and seeing, you know, which constituents from my district are participating and just trying to get that kind of, get that rounded up for myself. So that's, that's why I'm asking. But really appreciate all your effort, thank you.
No, of course. And then to address your question on the, making sure we're getting communications out about what is the Makerspace, what is, what is Local Works? We are doing a reset on our branding as well. So we will be launching new branding this fall. And we are going to produce a much heavier annual report this year that'll be directly mailed to a lot of our constituents that tells the story of everything that Local Works did in partnership with the city and all the amazing boards and commissions and task forces that we work with.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you. I have a quick question, and then I'll follow up with some comments. What is the future of the hip and bubble loans?
You don't talk about it? You haven't talked. All right, I'll keep talking.
I'll jump in and correct you.
So the, the hip and bubble loans, they are still very much active. And we're just trying to get the word out about them. So we've actually had some really, I've had some great conversations with Steve Art about making sure when a new business is going to open or just opened, that we get in there and talk about the bubble loan program specifically. Because we know when a new business opens, that could be exactly what they need at that moment. We are trying to understand as a board and a staff of if we can kind of reinvigorate bubble loans and get more hype around them. Because we're just not sure if the 1% from the market rate is enough. So if there's a way for us to get funding from a grant that could make it a partial grant itself within the loan. So if it's a $20,000 loan, we are strategically hoping within the next couple of years, when we have that diversified funding, that $10,000 of that could simply be a grant, and then the other 10 is the loan. It's something we're exploring. But those two programs are something that we, we plan to keep around and that we don't plan to eliminate. Thank you.
Can I just add? We've started, we've also started some discussion around using a bubble loan for a different, instead of larger, bigger costs, to do smaller costs for, you know, example, a marketing program, perhaps a website redesign, things that, that aren't there. There's a lot of logistics still to work through with that from viability of those loans, knowing that some of those will default. But as an entrepreneur, you know, it's easy to find capital, big capital for big construction projects. It's really hard to find capital besides a credit card in order to, to build out a website or to build a marketing campaign. Or perhaps buy inventory for fourth quarter in June and have to sit on it for six months. So there's ways to potentially re, relook at that money and reinvest it in a different way instead of just big projects.
And I will echo what many of my colleagues have said. You are doing an amazing job. You had a great showing of support from your board this evening. And I want to thank all of you for your hard work. I also feel very listened to after our meeting. And I've spoken to several of your board members about the direction you're taking Local Works in. And I think it's a very positive one and really appreciate all of the work and look forward to working with you and your team. And I think you're going to do a great job, so thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to meet you and welcome. I, I'm super excited to hear some of the stuff. I, I was on the board for Local Works, Wheat Ridge 2020, and then Local Works for about six years. And there were some things that I kept trying to move forward, which was supporting all corridors, not just Thirty-Eighth Avenue, which we did by opening up the bubble loans to all corridors because they used to be restricted just to Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So I'm, and I've been asking for that for every year since. And every year, somebody says, yeah, yeah, we're going to do that. So I'm really looking forward to seeing some actual action on that line item. And then also with the bubble loan, I used to constantly ask for us to open that up to something that's a little less brick and mortar because it was very heavy brick and mortar related. I know that because my brick and mortar got one of the loans way back 12 years ago. And I'm really happy to see Live Local kind of go back to its roots. That's really what it was when, when I first started it. I am sad that you're getting rid of the logo I made, but I really like the new logo. The new logo's awesome. And, and I look forward to the new design because I actually voted against that logo. So I'm happy to see a new one come on that one. So thanks for all your enthusiasm. And, and you know, everybody here will tell you that every year when Local Works comes, I'm typically the one that's, that's fighting for all of its funding to stay. And so it was really nice not to have to fight with my, with my friends this year. So thanks very much for this.
Okay, not too much frivolity.
Can I add something too, before you get a consensus?
Mr. Goff.
Yeah, just real quick too, just to summarize how this impacts the city and staff. We, in addition to the $250,000 budget request, the city is working with Local Works to provide them additional space for their Makerspace at the Parks Forestry Open Space Building on Forty-Fourth at Anderson. We're going to, the staff, Parks admin staff that was in that building is moving out into our leased office space on Forty-Fifth and Longworth. So we're still working on a, a very low lease rate of a dollar, I think, a year to start with. And maybe we'll negotiate, once they start making tons of money, we may renegotiate that. But we're working on a, on an agreement on that. And then also providing some office space for Local Works staff at our leased, leased building on Forty-Fifth, Forty-Fifth and Longworth. The city, as part of this proposal too, the city will be taking over fully the, the trunk-or-treat event and the holiday event next year. We're, we're working with Local Works to get it done this year. But we'll be taking those fully on next year as part of this. I missed anything? I think that was it.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you. I want to say I had a good conversation with you also, Paige.
Thank you. I want to say I had a good conversation with you, also Paige. Thank you very much for your enthusiasm. One thing I will mention is, we had discussed farmer's market. We're talking about food around here and having a big farmer's market like we used to have. You know, people always enjoyed that. And this is a big issue now. And we have a lot of people who grow their own food, and they do it independently at their places or whatever. This would also give a location where people could bring their wares or food and sell. And there could be also other things at the farmer's market. So I just want to reinforce that. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Councilor Hoppe.
Sorry, I just, that brought up a thought. We used to have Little Local Harvest and did a lot of education around, you know, local food and ecosystem, food ecosystems and stuff. But we did do a thing, which is probably way too late for this year, but maybe something to think about in the future, where we did a, we did a produce swap. So like all of the local, you know, gardeners and farmers and stuff came and did a produce swap. And then also, the extra then would go to the Senior Resource Center, and then they would prepare a meal for their seniors there.
Additional discussion around Local Works. Gosh, we've gotten quite wound up, don't we? All right. Let's see if we have a consensus to move the Local Works budget as presented forward. Well, looks like we do. Congratulations. And thank you very much for energizing this group, for bringing your board with you, for the great volunteers that we've got working on it, and for the great work you're doing in our community. So we appreciate it all.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, that concludes agenda item number two. So, let's see what's next on the agenda.
Adjournment, I think.
Oh, I thought we had, I thought we had a few more things. We've got two more items that we've got to go through. Item number three is staff reports.
Nothing else this evening. I was threatened over here.
Okay, but I'm sure quite of our elected officials have lots to say. So, okay, Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, again, to thank the city, Wheat Ridge Police Department, our Parks and Rec Public Works, and our Vata Fire for being wonderful partners of the Carnation Festival. This was an amazing event. I think it's the biggest yet in the seven years that I've been involved. The parade was wonderful. We had a great showing. We had great attendance. Everybody had fun. Just a little bit of rain on Saturday night, but not too bad. It didn't seem to thin the crowds very much. And everybody, I've heard amazing things. And want to thank the board for being so involved and wonderful and amazing stewards of this community and with all of their contributions. And we're gearing up again for next year for our 54th Annual Carnation Festival. So, thank you.
So how many more plates are we going to be able to accommodate?
I don't know. You're going to have to probably put some more boards up on the ceiling, because I think I'll present our 53rd next week. New City Hall, yeah.
We'll find a good cabinet maker that can do that for us.
All right.
Okay, additional, thank you, Councilor Dozeman. Councilor Nosler Beck.
Just want to wish everybody a happy first week back at school, if you're in Jefferson Public Schools. And a special shout out to all of our teachers and educators opening those doors this week. So, thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Weaver.
I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to the parade. We had such a good time. Thank you, Councilor Dozeman, for leading that. And I also wanted to thank all of the amazing pie bakers. We had 22 gorgeous pies, and one of the judges had to taste 22 different pies. And they were, they were, I know, it's a very tough job. I am taking applications for next year, if you want to be a judge. I think he's already gotten his application in. But we made over $500 for Family Tree from people submitting pies and selling that.
Very good. Councilor Ohm.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I met with our new Wheat Ridge interim principal a couple of weeks ago, and he informed me that they're working on some architectures, the entry exterior, which looks pretty interesting, and also some interior changes. They're currently working on some, trying to pick some concepts. And then we kind of chatted about, once he actually gets that finalized, that he will bring that information before council, not necessarily for approval, just kind of informative. And it looks really interesting. So I'm really happy to share that with you. And then next week, I'm going to be meeting with an ag science teacher. They're putting in a greenhouse at the high school, and we're going to try to see if there's any partnerships with someone in the ag industry, like urban agriculture, for some type of student study. And then I attended the Miras Carnation Festival, and I was talking to Maki of the Wheat Ridge Business Association, and I was chatting with her about, you know, student partnerships with Wheat Ridge High School. So eventually I will connect, and we'll connect with that interim principal at Wheat Ridge High. There's some other stuff in here I'm going to say, I'll save, so I don't go too long. But I did want to, something that is really important to me is water conservation. And I just want to quickly read an excerpt from the Southern Nevada Water Authority General Manager, John Etzminger, who wrote to the Secretary of the Interior today with something about Councilmember Hutchinson had talked about. "To the broader Colorado River community, the magnitude of the problem is so large that every single water user in every single sector must contribute solutions to the problem regardless of the priority system. We are at a stage where basin-wide, every drop counts, and every single drop, we are short of achieving 2 to 4 million acre feet as permit reductions draw us to a step closer to the catastrophic collapse of the system. As a city council member, I'd like to see in a future study session language that promotes water conservation through the use of efficient irrigation equipment, drought-tolerant turf, and other landscape irrigation best practices to reduce our consumption of potable water for landscapes, to ensure that future generations will also have access to it." So I'm looking for a second. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected officials? Councilor Holtein.
I'll be super fast tonight. I just really want to thank the Local Works board members who came tonight. It's really great to see you guys here and to have this kind of turnout and support and to put faces behind the board. So just really want to thank you for sitting through our housing discussion, to hear us talk about your work in our community. And then I just wanted to thank my peers. The housing workshop today and then the subsequent study session was just, it was a lot of content. It's really in the weeds. It's incredibly complicated. But doing the work that we did tonight is going to really ensure that we are serving our community in the long run. So I just want to thank you for taking time out of your day. I know some of us took time off from work to be here, but to really deeply understand it is, it's service to our community. So I just want to thank you guys for bringing your best to that and asking a lot of good questions, because it'll have good outcomes. And we'll be doing good work. So I just want to thank everyone for that.
Thank you. Any further, Councilor Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Ohm, as far as the greenhouse goes, you might contact CSU Extension Master Gardeners, okay, and see if they'd be interested in helping with that. Then also about the parade on Saturday, I had a lot of fun, and I lost contact with all the people in front of me, because I started handing out candy to seniors. You think of the kids that want the candy, it's like pre-Halloween. But then the seniors are sitting back there, or they're against the wall. There's three places on 38th Avenue where seniors are at. And they're sitting out there. And so then I started asking them, would you like some candy? Yes, I'd like candy. Sure, I like candy. Sure, I'll take some. And I was going up on the grass, giving them candy. And they really liked that, and I had so much fun doing that, because it was like already Halloween for the kids. So that was really fun for me. Thank you.
It was a good parade. Well, thank you all for being here. We had great discussions tonight. I think we did a lot of good study work. We will be back here a week from tonight in a regular council meeting. And school is getting back in sessions, so we've got kids playing, we've got kids going to school. So please drive safely and carefully around our neighborhood, and we'll see you back here again. Thanks so much. We are adjourned.